Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. This is the Commissioner meeting of February 23, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. here at Sussex County Community College's Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Terry to please call the roll.
Mr. Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Director Fasano?
Here.
Commissioner Patillo?
Here.
Commissioner Yardley?
Here.
Before our moment of silence this evening, we'd like to just take a moment to especially recognize the anniversary of Iwo Jima. On this date, in 1945, U.S. Marines of the 28th Regiment, 5th Division, raised the American flag in Iwo Jima, creating one of the most iconic images ever still to this day and a symbol of America. Tonight, we recognize all of our veterans and the men and women at home and abroad who keep us safe every day and especially during these times. So I'll ask if you can please rise with me for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 9, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: the New Jersey Herald, the Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item 5 on our agenda is the approval of our agenda tonight. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 6 on our agenda is our proclamation certificates and presentations, and we do have a presentation tonight. I understand we have Tom Vera and Ron Patillo here from SCUMA. And John Drake as well, I'm sorry. I see you, John.
Thanks for having us. I'd like to make a presentation about the dump, the landfill. I want to give you a brief history and...
You're being picked up. It's very weird. I'm sorry.
Okay. Better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For our request to raise the cap from $39 million that we currently have to $43 million, $4 million increase. The dump was cited in 1987 by the...it was forced by the NJDEP upon the freeholders, and the freeholders cited the dump in 1987. And it was supposed to be fully funded through capping and the 30-year maintenance after the dump by tipping fees, by the users that came in. They were supposed to pay for the dump construction and closure. In 1997, the Supreme Court threw out flow control, which was one of the mechanisms that funded the dump under the original law. When they did that, the Supreme Court, what happened is we wound up with what would have been a stranded debt because we would have closed in 2016. We would add a stranded debt of $20 million. So what SCUMA did is they looked for a solution to that to bring to the freeholder board. And there were these expanded...there was one expansion project that was done inside of the New Jersey with MSE walls, which is a vertical, not increasing your footprint of the dump, but a vertical increase in the volume. We brought that to the freeholders, which we could get the dump from 2016 to 2066, and it would be fully funded by the tip fees. We could overcome the stranded debt, and we would have enough money with the tip fees to have the 30-year maintenance. Freeholders approved that. Then in 2011, for government landfills, the state reinstituted flow control. So that means that all Sussex County material has to come just to the Sussex County dump. We can't take outside material. We can only serve as the people inside the dump, Sussex County. So at the end of that, we started a three-phase project. We got the approval for Phase 1 from the freeholders. We built that, and now we're on to the second phase of the expansion process, which we got approval from the freeholders in...
September 2020.
September 2020. And we started the...this Stage 2 of the landfill. What happened once we started this in '21, we went out to bid. We got all the funding in place. We had the I-Bank, and we had some bonds that we issued, $33 million in the I-Bank and $6 million in the...in the bonds. Then we hit the pandemic. And with the pandemic, then we wound up in today's concerns with the inflation. It's running 7%. And on the wholesale level, it's running 10%. And every time the supply chain issues are adding to our costs, what happens is every time we go to order a piece, we can't get it to complete the dump. So that's what basically we're here for. We're asking you to raise our cap from $39 million to a $4 million supplemental funding, which we're going to get off of the I-Bank as supplemental funding when we go through. Do you have anything?
The only thing I would like to add, obviously...
Step up to the speaker, please.
The only thing I'd like to add, and working cooperatively as usual with the freeholders, in 2020, when we first came to you with this landfill project, we had originally sought $44 million authorization. And then we kind of relooked at it and said, let's sharpen our pencils, and we took it down to 39. And, you know, unfortunately, with the economics of the pandemic, and we didn't...nobody had the ability to see into the future what was going to happen, but we're just faced with increased cost. And we're asking for the additional $4 million. We're still under that, you know, what we had originally come to you for. We're seeking the $4 million for $43 million authorization at this point. And this allows us to timely progress with the work. And if there is eligible work, it would be funded by the I-Bank. So it allows us to continue to pursue that funding with the I-Bank without having to stop the project and come back in front of the board. And if we don't need the money, we won't use the money. So that's kind of where we stand.
Thank you both very much. Do any commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. If...so if we don't give you the $4 million, that's what you're asking for, what's the impact on the project?
The impact on the project is if there's a change order that puts us near or over the $39 million authorization, we'd have to issue a stop work order and then come back in front of the freeholders at that point in time. And, you know, with a stop work order, you know, there'd be claims, there's, you know, additional expenses on top of that. And we want to see through the timely progression of the project and try to get it done on time or early if we could. And it saves everybody money in the long run if we do that.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So if we don't pass this tonight and you have a stop work order, we have a potential of an increase in the expenditures of the operation?
No.
In other words, you go up, you're at $40 million, you need $1 million.
We're at $39 million.
You're at $39. And if you had to come back here, what is the negative impact on the project by having to come back here?
The project stops. And there's a claim, a time claim and a monetary claim that the contractor gets to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just like to add as well, if there's a stop order and there's a lapse, we have been following the project and watching the cost of even the raw materials increase, increase, increase monthly. So even a small delay on getting something can drastically change the cost of those materials. So I do understand exactly what you're saying, to say delay is not good for us, not good financially, not good for the residents either.
Our first change order was $1 million for force majeure. They had a storm in Texas where they produce the fabric, and we...first change order, $1 million.
I just want to interject a little bit. I was able to take a tour two weeks ago with Ron Patillo and John Drake. Number one, I've worked at probably six or seven landfills in the state of New Jersey. By far, our landfill in Lafayette is the nicest. That's odd to say, but it really is really, really nice.
It's a nice dump?
When it comes to landfills. So the questions I had to Ron and Jake during our meeting was sometimes there's contractors that are low bidders. And basically what they do is they'll be the low bidder, they get the job, and then they pad everything, right? So then it will actually go up exponentially depending on how big the job is. So we asked that to Ron, and him being in the line of work that he's in, he knows better to give somebody a change order without having...doing their due diligence. So I felt very comfortable with that. That's important, like I said, being in the line of work I'm in. And then the other thing is the materials increased. The liner alone was up $1 million due to that Texas freeze, which is crazy. Stopping the project, I do believe, is just going to hurt us. It's a good project that's going to last till 2066, I believe, the landfill. With a little secret information, that could go longer, you know? Most of us won't be around. Anthony will definitely be around and get some more time out of that. So these guys do a very, very good job on the SCUMA board. I really appreciate it. I got to be honest with you. I wouldn't want your job. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
I'd just like to chime in a little bit. I was here during 2011 when you changed and went to a flow control, and all of the towns, especially down in the lower end, that were sending their garbage out to Morris County, had to now send their garbage up to Sussex County. And the fact that we can actually keep that open till 2066 is phenomenal, because at the time, we thought it was going to close in 2016, and nobody really knew what to do with the garbage. So the project has to be done. It's a great project. It's going to help us, and I've been there too, Ronnie. I've seen your work. I can attest that SCUMA does a tremendous job for us, all of them, and they're very dedicated to what they do, and they're watching things carefully. So thanks for the presentation.
And I believe Bond Counsel has prepared a resolution for your consideration today.
Yes. Any other questions? Anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item 7 is public hearings, in which there are none. And item 8 is our first of two public sessions from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. And I did just want to take a moment of personal privilege here. I understand there may be some here in the audience who intend to speak on something that they think we may intend to do on health benefits or retiree health benefits. That is not on our agenda tonight, and at this time, this board has no intention of doing that. I don't know what information is out there, but if there's anything we can address straight up, we will, other than simply saying here tonight that we will not be taking any action and have no intention at this time of taking action when it comes to retiree health benefits. As I stated at the beginning, this public session from the floor is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. And we ask that you please come up to the microphone and maintain six feet social distance when other attendees. And when you arrive, please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic you're speaking about for the record. At the end of public session, I will do my best to address any questions or comments. So with that, is there a motion to open the floor for public comment for agenda items only?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and we are now open for public comment from the floor regarding agenda items.
William Hayden, Frankfurt, New Jersey. Items 13A, 13G, the voting machines and the PR firm. I see we're spending $1.6 million on new voting machines. Is that necessarily needed? And it is a no-bid contract with a company called ESNS, who have a long history of failed voting that has resulted in lawsuits. Should that occur, do we have any reassurances from that company that we will not, the taxpayers, be held responsible for those costs? And on 13G about hiring a...which is funny, 13A is a no-bid, 13G, we're putting out the bid for a PR firm. I guess you guys need PR now. A PR firm...are you guys thinking of doing something maybe you need a PR firm for? Because I would think if your good works would be your PR, and taxpayers don't have to foot that bill. Thank you.
I do want to just take a moment to address item number 15, financial payment of bills list. Is the list of the actual bills that are being voted on tonight made available to the public? And if so, where would we find that information? Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. With that, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Make that motion.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Going in reverse order regarding our bills list and where those bills will be made available, I don't know that answer here. I know for a fact that our bills, of course, are operable, but...and they should be on our minutes, I believe. Correct? Terry, do I have that right?
Yes, we have the minutes. New bills available.
On our minutes.
In the body of the minutes, but there is in the resolution binder of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. In the resolution binder of our meeting in the minutes is where this bills list in its entirety will be found. And of course, you can submit an OPA request. Is that helpful? Okay. Regarding voting equipment, I don't have all of those answers, other than we have been working with our Board of Elections, and we have been working under the premise of changes of election law, which I know started last year and continues through this year, which is why this resolution has been brought to the board from the Board of Elections.
I can say this response to your main question. First of all, there are only a finite number of companies that are certified by the New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission to provide voting machines within the state. So you have to work off of that vendor list. That's number one. Number two, it's a comprehensive contract that includes a myriad of terms. If there are defaults by the company, there are remedies afforded the county to remediate those.
I have something.
Okay. Sure.
This is really a...this is really a mandate by the state. Some of it is covered...is Greg here tonight, or is Greg...
He's right there.
And some of this is covered through our budget, and there's money that does come from the state. I don't believe it's covered, but we are required, unfortunately, to do this. But I think that the question was asked, maybe we can get a presentation. Is this something that we have to do tonight? This...or can this go to the next meeting? Because maybe we could get a presentation on this.
Mr. Poff's here. Maybe we can get some clarity from him. I assume this came through the election board originally?
That is correct. The request to purchase the voting equipment is the final thing of the replacement of the entirety of the county's voting equipment. It is based upon a recommendation embedded that was done by the Board of Elections, and the county has previously purchased this equipment under what was Phase 1, appropriate for the...
Mr. Hayden is just kind of late to this party. He's been going through this for a while. This is just the last step.
And regarding a PR firm, the commissioners have heard since the beginning of this pandemic from residents, that we need to do a better job of communicating what's available to them, and that is the objective that that item is looking to accomplish. Item 9 on our agenda is commissioner comments, and as always, we'll start to my left with Commissioner Patillo.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. I'd like to begin my report with the Community Health Needs Assessment Report from Sussex County. The Sussex County Public Health Nursing partnered with Atlantic Health and other collaborators in the completion of the Community Health Needs Assessment. This report is now available on the Sussex County website, if you'd like to take a look at it, which is www.sussex nj.us. One of the goals of this report is to identify unmet needs related to health and develop strategies to improve community health in Sussex County. Now from our Office of Public Health Nursing, there will be a women's health clinic that will be held on Thursday, February 24, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Office of Public Health. To make an appointment, just call 973-579-0570, extension 1246. For environmental health, in the month of January, the Division of Health inspected 104 food establishments, three animal facilities, and two tanning facilities. From our Senior Services, there's a volunteer income tax assistance available. Northwest Cap will be offering volunteer income tax assistance services. There will be no in-person appointments. Therefore, individuals must bring their paperwork to a specified location, and a copy of the completed return will be mailed or emailed. Drop-off appointments are available on Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 17 Church Street in Newton, or on Thursday from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Sparta Library located at 20 Woodport Road in Sparta. To schedule an appointment, you can call 973-784-4900, extension 2902. For our Senior Services, our Caregiver Support Group, a senior service caregiver support group meeting will be held virtually via Zoom from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Friday, March 4. For more information or to register to attend these meetings, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288. And the last one is our Senior Service Center for Lifelong Learning at Sussex County Community College. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, and they were going to have a presentation on internet safety for seniors, but unfortunately, it had to be canceled. But hopefully, in the spring, they will try to reschedule it. I just want to mention, too, that on Friday, I had an interview with Jim Gilligan from FHI Counseling Consultants, and it was for the Sussex County Skydance Ride Transportation Study, which we are doing. And during that interview, we discussed the vision for the Sussex County Skydance Ride and for opportunities for improving our services, our delivery issues, and our service gaps. We spoke about ways to create the best transit system possible for the residents and businesses within Sussex County, and it was really a wonderful back and forth with a lot of great ideas for extensions and enhancements. So I'm really looking forward to the results of that study, which we hope to have sometime in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. I'm sorry, Commissioner Patillo. Now for Commissioner Fantasia.
Close enough. We're both brunette. I got it. Okay, I'm going to start out with the department from the Division of Health. Again, Sussex County Division of Health in collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy offers drive-through COVID vaccinations, all three, first, second, and third doses, and we're having clinics that are available at the fairgrounds consecutive Thursdays, February 24th tomorrow from 2:00 to 5:00, Thursday, March 3rd from 2:00 to 5:00, and Thursday, March 10th from 2:00 to 5:00. And if you'd like to fill out your vaccination form in advance, you can download it from the Sussex County website. And Public Health Nursing continues to provide vaccinations to those who are homebound. The New Jersey Department of Health reports that Sussex County residents have received 186,875 doses of the vaccine. The most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level Report indicates the entire state, including us, is yellow. You remember those COVID-like illness reports and the weekly reports that we were issued, and we were either in green or yellow or orange or red. We are back to yellow, headed towards green. We have been reporting an average of about 20 cases daily, and it's consistent with other states across the nation. So it seems, again, I'll reiterate that the states with the most restrictive lockdowns and extended two-year-long, two weeks to stop the curve seem to be having the same rate of infections as us. The county has a total of 34,505 cases, which represents just about 25% of our population has experienced COVID-19. There has been a total of 459 deaths here in the county, representing 1.3% of all cases. Our hospitalizations are significantly down. For the month of February, there are 21 reported hospitalizations in comparison to January, where there were 207. There are 19 current outbreaks in the county, one in an acute care facility, six long-term care facilities, that staff and residents, three group homes, and nine schools and daycares. And as you are aware, I'll again reiterate that in order to be an outbreak, it has to originate within the facility and pass from individual to individual. So it's not one person in a school that has it. It has to show transmission within that facility itself. The weekend ending February 5, the Department of Health is reporting that the Omicron variant is about 98% of all identified variants across the state. Delta's about 1%, and another 1% are the remaining variants. But for any information about booster shots, including eligibility requirements, testing, any of that, please visit sussex nj.us, or you can always call the Office of Public Health Nursing, 973-579-0570, extension 1211. I know that in the news, there has been much information about the Woodland Behavioral Health Center, otherwise known as Andover Subacute 1 and 2. Anthony, I'm not sure if you're going to be touching on that in your report this evening, so I'll leave that one alone, other than just please reiterating to please report any violations that you suspect if you are a family member, have a loved one, know an employee that's in there. And there's a mechanism to do so that Commissioner Fasano will discuss. As far as a Trenton update, there is a new... there is a new bill that was proposed just on Valentine's Day. And this bill here in Trenton is sponsored by District 33 Assemblyman Raj Mukherjee. And the synopsis, he is a Democrat from Jersey City, the synopsis is it permits minors aged 14 years or older to consent to vaccines without the permission of their parents or guardians. And I want to read to you the statement, because as you are aware, this board has taken serious offense to the stripping of parental rights that continue to happen as to our District 24 legislators. So here is the statement regarding this bill. This bill permits a minor who is 14 years of age or older to consent to vaccination for certain communicable diseases, regardless of whether the minor's parent or guardian grant permission for this vaccination. Under the bill, a minor who is 14 years of age or older is permitted to consent to the administration of an adequate dose of an immunizing agent, a vaccine or booster shot, by a licensed healthcare practitioner or properly authorized pharmacist for polio, mumps, measles, diphtheria, rubella, varicella, HIB, pertussis, tetanus, pneumonia, meningitis, HPV, hepatitis B, or COVID-19, or any other contagious disease that is the basis for the declaration of a public health emergency if the administration of the immunizing agent, vaccine, or booster, the minor has been authorized by the Federal Food and Drug Administration, regardless of whether the minor's parent or guardian consents to the administration of the immunizing agent, vaccine, or booster shot. The minor in such case is deemed to have the same legal capacity to act and the same powers and obligations as a person of legal age, so on and so forth. I don't even think I need to expound on why that is the most ridiculous piece of legislation to be presented in Trenton. You know, as we know, there are certain allergies, even let's take it, to specific vaccines. And without the parent's knowledge or consent, I don't know many 14-year-olds that recall when they were six months old and had a reaction to a vaccine, you know, as an infant or as a child. Does add this to the ridiculous stupidity of this concept that children, children, are capable of making decisions regarding marijuana use, alcohol use, their own vaccinations, no parental notification for termination of pregnancy, now can be done by a midwife, by a doula, the insurance companies. You think your insurance is expensive now. How on earth does someone get insured who is not a physician to perform an abortion on a minor unbeknownst to their children? But welcome to the state of New Jersey. This is Murphy's country. We just live here. So Sussex County never disappoints, and I expect some noise will be made. I know that I've spoken with Assemblyman Worth about this specifically today. And I guarantee you that District 24 will continue to push back on this absolute nonsense that continues to strip our parental rights here. So that's my District 24 update. I can give you a couple more updates here for some events that are happening in the county. First of all, right here at the college in honor of Women's History Month, there's a virtual event, Managing Emotions and Building Resilience on March 8th via Zoom. There's a guest speaker, Jennifer Carpenteri, Manager of Atlantic Behavioral Health Community Services. And there's questions and answers. There's a session that will be happening discussing about some of the issues that affect all of us and our families. We all know that COVID has put quite a strain on the mental health of men, women, and children alike. So I think this is going to be a really helpful session, and you're all invited to join. You can register online via Zoom. Again, that's March 8th at 4:00 p.m. Information I have requested that that also be put on our social media website. In addition to the college's website, it's already there. Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council, I told you I went to their annual meeting, but now things are really, really heating up as the spring is coming closer. So there's two new contests that are out now. This one, first one is for photographers. It's the Seventh Annual Exposed Regional Juried Photography Exhibit. So in April, all of the photos will be displayed in the gallery. That's the plan, COVID permitting. So any digital entries need to be submitted by the 10th of March. So it's coming up, and that's a really hard deadline. And all artists must be prepared to deliver their matted and framed selections on March 25th and 26th. So the show will open on April 1st. And there's going to be an awards presentation on April 9th at 7:00 p.m. There's cash prizes for the best photographs. And this contest is actually limited to adults only. This is 18 and older. So again, if you are a photographer, a budding photographer, please, please check that out. And then the second is our 34th Annual Skylands Regional Juried Art Exhibition. And the exhibit is open to all artists, 18 or older. All fine arts, including photography, sculpture, digital art, there are also cash prizes available. And these entries are due in June, the very beginning of June, June 3rd. The show opens July 1st. And then there is an awards presentation. But the exciting part about that is you display your artwork in the gallery, and it's open for purchase. So individuals can come in and visit the gallery and actually purchase the artwork that you create. So you can register online, and you can also submit your registration fee through PayPal, or you can just mail in your form with a check to the Arts and Heritage Council. So those are two great events coming up. I will keep you posted on the competitions that are coming for children and for teenagers. And then we also have a special senior citizens art competition, and I will let you know the dates of that as well. But these two are open to anyone age 18 and up. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley.
Well, I have a very short report. Spring is in the air. March is coming. And in March, the Senior Services Department does a program called Grab and Go. So they'll have a St. Patrick's Day Grab and Go luncheon. Also, the State Insurance System Program received $36,000 to assist seniors with their Medicare assistance and the New Jersey Chromosomal Assistance for the Aged and Disabled. Also, they receive, let's see, they can help people, any unmarried individual with maximum of about $38,000. Or married companies, married couples of 40, make about $45,000, may qualify, so that they can get medical assistance. The New Jersey, the Sussex County historian is revamping the entire his webpage. So I look forward to that. And he will once again have the programs that he had last year, where they'll pick different topics about the county, and students can write on that and receive some scholarship funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to give you a short synopsis about some bridges that are going on. I don't want to bore you with all the information. Bridge D-38, County Route 519, or Wantage Avenue in Frankfurt, the county design consultant for the project, Pickering Courts in Somerson, is working towards completion of 90% design plans. Preparation of the NJDEP and Soil Conservation Permit Application is underway. Startup construction is tentatively scheduled for spring of '23, and is expected to take eight months to complete. Bridge X-48, Mudtown Road in Wantage Township, county design consultant for the project is Boswell Engineering, is working towards completion of 90% design plans. Preparation of NJDEP and Soil Conservation Permit Applications is also underway. Startup construction is tentatively scheduled for spring of '23 as well, and is expected to take eight months. Hopefully, that pans out, and it's eight months. Those roads, you know, are a major throughway for some of those towns. So I was able to tour the Sanderson Garage with Director Anthony Frasano here. It was good. It was good to meet with them, pretty much the same answers and questions as we always have. Low pay. They need more help, that's for sure. I think there was three employees out that day, which really impacts their work. When you have to do some roadwork, and there's two flaggers, that just, that cuts you right in half, sometimes leaving just one employee doing all the work. So we are working on that. And I know that's in our budget to hire some new people, so I'm happy about that. And hopefully, that will continue in the years to come. We also met with the CWA on last Friday, which went kind of good. I think we're working in the right direction. I want to bring up something that's important that none of the commissioners so far brought up. And there was a mandate that a lot of people saw for SCCC. They were going to extend their mandate, mask mandates, to May 14th. I'm going to speak for myself here and no one else. That is crazy. That's ridiculous. That is not what we stand for. I mean, I'm appreciative of the governor in the first place, and he mandate, his mandate's over in March 7th. So for somebody to extend that on their own is just beyond me. And how the commissioners don't find that out before that's published is also beyond me. Since then, I believe that's rescinded from what my email said. So I am happy about that. But it should have never been done. And I just want to make that clear, that I do not stand behind that whatsoever. Vote Tech, if you, it probably just came out earlier today, is not going to mandate masks past the 7th. They're going to have a board meeting tomorrow. I did speak to the vice principal today about that. I do ask, I believe you're the liaison to both of those?
Correct.
Yes. I would request them to, any big decisions, they should be telling you.
They have been made aware.
Okay. And just one thing I just want to touch on, the comment with communications. Since I've gotten here, Bruce Scruton interviewed me for the Herald in February of last year, and he asked me some of the things that I want to run on and fix. And one of them was communications, because I think we lack that here at the county. Transparency is very big for me, and I believe it is for everybody that sits up here along with me. People need to know what's going on, the good, the bad, whether they like it or not. They need to hear about it. And a lot of the good stuff that we do, because you guys don't always hear about the good stuff we do, mainly the bad. That's what we get picked on, right? A lot of times, it's, being here is a thankless job. So it's important. It's something that we are going to do, I believe, tonight. And I think it's going to make Sussex County a better place. And I actually don't know any other county in the state of New Jersey that doesn't have communications. So I think it's a big part. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney. And just channeling off of that, and I don't want to spotlight Bruce Scruton here from the Herald. But the other dynamic when it comes to communications firm is that not everybody reads the newspaper anymore. And I mean that in the best way possible, Bruce. But there's a lot of people who get their news and their information elsewhere. And it's important that Sussex County has a seat at those tables as well. And that's what this resolution tonight really addresses. And it's been a long time coming, to Chris's point. There's also been some discussion tonight, of course, every meeting, regarding COVID-19. And I mentioned at our last meeting that the state-sponsored COVID-19 testing site at Sussex County Fairgrounds, and really all of our county pandemic efforts and resources, for that matter, are determined by real-time need and demand here in the county. And as you can imagine, the number of tests administered at this site has continued to decline, and at this point, remains very low. Sussex County expects this operation to continue until March 19th. And at that time, this testing site will close, and the county will shift its testing efforts elsewhere. I want to emphasize, though, that throughout the pandemic, these decisions and these collaborations have been based on that real-time need and resource availability here in the county. And if demand for tests goes back up, I expect this site to go back up as well. And of course, all of our latest COVID updates, including where and how to get tested, can be found right on our county website at sussex nj.us. Tonight on our agenda, we have a resolution opposing the extension of executive orders by Governor Murphy beyond the public health emergency. This resolution has also been supported by other county and local governments throughout New Jersey. The resolution gives a timeline since the beginning of the pandemic of public health emergency declarations and corresponding emergency powers that come with it from the governor's office. Of course, recently, just a few weeks ago, actually, Governor Murphy promised that he would not impose universal mandates when declaring a new state of emergency. And days later, he did, directly imposing universal vaccine mandates on healthcare workers and correctional officers, but oddly and notably not the inmates of those same facilities. Failing to comply with his mandates, regardless of your personal preferences, can result in termination. After almost two years since Governor Murphy's public health emergency declaration, local governments, businesses, and the public at large have adjusted to this pandemic, and have learned to take appropriate actions to protect themselves and others against COVID-19. Over that same time, though, Governor Murphy has issued over 200 executive orders relating to this pandemic. And this resolution states that the Sussex County Commissioner Board agrees that it is well past time to return to the regular order of government, and it calls for the restoration of constitutional balance as guaranteed by the United States and the New Jersey constitutions. It also makes clear formally our clear opposition to the governor's recent imposition of a vaccine mandate for healthcare workers and correctional officers, and our opposition to Governor Murphy's declaration of a new public health emergency. All this, bless you, all this is being done, really simply because it's time to return to business. And we know that, and we hear that every day. Last week, myself and Sheriff Strata outlined our approach to the ongoing situation at Woodland Behavioral Facility, formerly known as Andover Subacute. According to recent media reports, state health officials have suspended new admissions at this facility, and is now the subject of state monitoring and possibly other state-led corrective actions. Sussex County Division of Health was not made aware of this, nor the State Department's findings. Sussex County has no statutory authority to regulate nursing homes and other long-term care facilities within our border, and we must rely on the state to do so, just like every other county. Oversight of these facilities rests entirely with the state of New Jersey. In the past, Sussex County has assisted the state regarding this facility, including recently, when we encouraged the deployment of the National Guard again for a second time. Sheriff Strata is encouraging residents, staff, and family members to use the sheriff's Crime Stoppers hotline to report any abuse or improper activity at 973-300-crime, or report, or you can file reports at sussexcountysheriff.com. He's also been working with the New Jersey Attorney General's Office and the United States Attorney General's Office. Here at the commissioner level, the board via county council will be resubmitting Open Public Record Act requests again for information on this facility and others in Sussex County. And we will be formally requesting a briefing from the New Jersey Department of Health on the status of Woodland Behavioral Health. The safety of our residents has been and will always continue to be our top priority. And in this instance, holding the state responsible to do its job to keep our residents safe is our top priority, because it has to be. On another note, I see some residents here in the audience today who have come previously to bring some attention to an issue at a residential complex in Newton, in Spring Street. We have our Director of Health, Director of Health and Human Services, Carol, here again today. She has really been working on the county's behalf to continue to push, to see this issue resolved. And on, just like the nursing home situation, although Sussex County does not have a real actual authority over this facility, we have communicated with the facility, we have communicated with DCA, we have communicated with our local legislature's office regarding this issue. And tomorrow, I believe, at 2 o'clock, thank you, 1 o'clock, sorry, Sussex County health officials will be attending a meeting with Newton town officials regarding this matter as well. That's tomorrow afternoon. I know you've kept in contact with Carol. I wanted to make sure she was here again, to make sure that you're getting the resources that you need. I also know that you've brought some new information to Carol that could help with some new resources that we can get to you. So I asked for Carol to be here tonight to help with that. And of course, when this is all over, I'll stop by as well. Finally, last week, the board held its budget workshop, and we continue to work on it and refine it as we prepare for budget adoption. I just wanted to say I'm extremely proud of all the effort that our budget team and the commissioners up here with me put into this budget. And I can say confidently that fiscal responsibility, protecting the taxpayer, and the county's financial positioning are all prevalent. Additionally, myself and other board members will take place in American Rescue Plan discussions in the weeks ahead as we continue to plan how to best utilize local recovery planning in addressing critical issues and addressing critical issues that have been critical issues for Sussex County for a while, including small business assistance and broadband internet connectivity. Finally, as Deputy Director Carney mentioned, him and I had the chance to meet with CWA leadership last week, and really to present our thinking on our first order of business when it comes to that local recovery funding, and that's hazard pay or premium pay for our employees for the essential work that they do and have done since this pandemic has increased the demand on all of county government. So with that, I'll conclude my report. And we'll move to item number 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda. There is none. Item number 11 on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 9th regular meeting and executive executive session and the February 16th budget meeting?
Still moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item 13 on our agenda is our resolutions portion. Do we have any motions to adopt the resolutions A through H?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Patillo seconds. Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Passano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Director, Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 14 on our agenda is award of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. We are gonna just separate these items a little bit, and I'll ask first for a motion for items 14A and B. Is there a motion for items 14A and B?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion?
Reason?
I'm sorry?
What is the reason for separating out?
We had a request from a commissioner to separate it out.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second for items 14A and B. No further discussion. Terry, can you please call the roll for items 14A and B?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Passano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 14C on our agenda is authorizing the award contract for professional legal services. This is going to Florio Perucci, Steinhardt, Capelli, Tipton, and Taylor LLC. Is there a motion for item 14C on our agenda?
I make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little bit of discussion. Since Andy Kinsey has been here, I think, number one, I think we're like-minded, but it has nothing, it has been nothing but good since he's been here. He jumped right in, talk about not getting your feet wet, he's off and running. So it was nice to actually have him here before we were able to have this contract. It was a nice little, it was testing the waters, and I think it worked out well. I can only say good things about the guy in, in the firm, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Passano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Item 15 on our agenda is the payment of the bills list. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Passano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 16 on our agenda is our personnel agenda. Authorizing our personnel agenda, is there a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Passano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item 17 on our agenda is our administrative report. And I'll hand it off to our county administrator, Mr. Gregory Poff.
Thank you, Director. As we've got a number of items to update the board in executive session, I'll keep my report brief. As was mentioned, we are working towards finalizing the 2020 county budget, and I would like to take the opportunity of thanking not only the commissioners who participated in the various budget subcommittees, but also the staff for the very, the very good work that was done in putting together the 2020 county budget. I had the opportunity to attend the statewide insurance fund reorganization meeting, where Newton's own Tom Russo was appointed chairman. The fund is rolling out new cybersecurity services for its members, and a presentation was made to the insurance commissioners at the reorganization. I look forward to working with our Division of IT with these new cybersecurity services that are being provided through our membership in the statewide insurance fund. And lastly, I met with the Passaic County Purchasing Cooperatives consultant about some new initiatives that the county may want to consider to limit future utility increases. I'm waiting on some additional information. I understand that County Council is also involved in some of these initiatives down in Warren County as well, and look forward to the opportunity of discussing that in greater detail with the board at the appropriate time. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Greg, I just have one question for you. I didn't want to bring it up in my comments before, just because I didn't know the date for the, the change of the pay, pay, pay period. Is that starting March 1st?
I know that Treasury had sent out a letter to the union representatives asking for feedback. I'll have to follow up with the chief financial officer relative to the response that she's gotten. I don't have that answer this evening.
Okay. So the proposal, just so all the commissioners know, the proposal is to change the dates from, it was from Monday to Saturday, I believe it was, instead of Sunday to Saturday? So, you know, it's a big change. I mean, I had a lot to do with overtime and whatnot, to kind of figure out some issues that we had with that, so.
Thank you, Greg. County Council report, anything?
Only a couple of things, which is, not usually, but tonight, Sussex County opted into the national opioid settlement with J&amp;J and the three opioid distributors. Sussex County has been informed that 100% of the required municipalities in New Jersey have opted into the settlement. The settling defendants have until Friday to accept or reject the proposed settlement. If the settlement's accepted, the first payment should be made in April. We have meetings, as the director mentioned, ongoing, relevant to the American Rescue Plan Act. The final rule takes place, takes effect April 1st, so we have a couple of things to do between now and then. I was happy to be able to help the county reach an agreement with Hunterdon County relevant to the provision of health officer services. Particular shout-out to Commissioner Rich in Hunterdon, who we reached out to through Commissioner Yardley, and to your county administrator and the administrator in Hunterdon for kind of putting the fine touches, final touches on the agreement. But it was a cooperative effort amongst the two counties.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Item 19 on our agenda is unfinished business. Do any board members have any unfinished business?
It's not my personal unfinished business, but our legal counsel does have an update that you'll be receiving, if you have not received it already, regarding a lack of response for our state request for the information. We've been stymied, as you know. We had our ballot question regarding the nursing home, so we do have an update for that, and action will be taken on, on the part of the board.
Yeah, I apologize, Commissioner. You're correct. You had your ballot question, which passed overwhelmingly here in the county, relevant to the county's pursuit of the originally requested information relevant to the pandemic and its administration. That request was resubmitted just a week or so ago. I received a response today, basically saying we've already provided the information to you, that which they were willing to provide. I haven't been able to formulate a response yet, but I will have that tomorrow, which will put the county in a position to take the next steps, should they choose to do so.
Thank you.
I have some unfinished business, too. I know we are gonna have our American Rescue Plan meeting on Friday. Since then, it's changed, right? I won't be around it. That got postponed. Just something to put on your radar is the ARPA, using some ARPA money for new hires. I know we spoke about it before. Just want to make sure that's, number one, legal to do so. Again, we have a lot of vacancies, and I think it's worth a shot. If you guys are good with it, I want that approval first, obviously. It's just not my opinion, everybody's opinion, if that's the way we want to go. I have, I, I believe the CWA will have, have no problem with that, speaking to a rep. So if we can move forward with that, trying to find that answer, again, if you guys are all good with that, if you have a problem, then I don't want anybody to waste their time. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any other unfinished business this evening? Okay, item 20 on our agenda is new business. Do we have any new business this evening?
I have some new business, too. Rapid fire. I talked to Mr. Steinhardt a little bit about county building mask mandates. I know Warren County, they're, they're two days already that they are not requiring anything. I would like to do that legally, as long as we can do that. I would like to see no masks in our county buildings and our, and our DPW garages. If you guys, again, are all fine with that. Obviously, if you want to wear one, feel free.
I think that there's discussions going on within our administration on that, so. Now, everybody talking about that.
I think it's most certainly a topic that the board is interested in pursuing. I know there has been some conversations here with council about our county buildings and doing that. And I think we'll get that to a place where we'll be ready to have it with our administration. But it's really not that complicated.
Well, if there's not a problem, let's do it now. What's the holdup?
I think your administrator should be working on this inside, not us.
Yeah, I think it's something we can take, I think there's ongoing discussions between the administrator and some of the groups, some of the groups within the, you know, some of the bargaining units within the county.
I don't believe there is a holdup. I think we're working on it right now.
That's what I said. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused. That happened, a little staccato here. So what we are saying is that Warren County, we were under the impression, of course, that in the county buildings, the mandate came from Trenton. So there were specific buildings, specific locations, you know, in state buildings, we know what the laws were there, correct? My question is, I was contacted by a couple of people that work down at one of the garages that said, hey, if the schools are being lifted on March 7th, can the garage be lifted on March 7th? Which, of course, precipitates the conversation. I know there's a lot of moving parts, there's, you know, union representation, all of that piece, right? But my question is, what authority does the county have to say optional masks? So let's please stop saying no masks either, okay? Because that's something that does give pause to people who may choose to, you know, who may have a medical issue, a feeling that they want to. We've been about choice from day one, whether you want the shot, whether you want to wear a mask, whether you want to wear 15 masks, knock yourself out. But I don't want to set the precedent to say that this board is saying no masks, no shots, no this, no that, no. What I would like us to be known for, to say, it is your choice, what you choose to do. Because that's what this whole fight, argument has been about from day one, is the ability to make your own decision for what's best for you. So that's why I think it is important that if those conversations are happening, let's find out what the groups think, right? Let's find out what it is that they need. But, you know, I also don't want to go out with the flag screaming, no mask, no shot, no this, no that, because that's as bad as saying you must, you must, you must, as well. Live and let live.
I would encourage the commission board to kind of take this up. We want to have a discussion about anything that's a working condition or anything of that nature, that we kind of take it up in our executive session, something we can talk about in a little while. Since we're gonna be in one, probably in the next 20 minutes.
Well, then, then.
Come back out when we're done, we certainly can.
I, I have no desire to come back out when we're done. What I would like to do, for me, and I'm just speaking for me, is I don't know if we have to amend the executive agenda, but if we need to discuss that, since it's an employee policy, do we have to change the executive session line items there? Also, to add on the communication from the state regarding the not releasing the information to us, does that need to be amended? Because it is pending litigation, right?
Correct. When we go in, we'll take a look at the list if we need to make an addition when Teresa reads the comments, we will. But you have to be in knowledge, it can move in real time with the executive session, it's the purpose of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Item 21 on our agenda is public session from the floor, and this is our second public session from the floor, for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. We ask that you please line up to the microphone, maintain six feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, please state your name and your municipality for the record. At the conclusion of public comments, I'll do my best to address any questions or comments. With that, is there, is there a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Commissioner Patillo seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and we are now open to the floor for public session.
Hi, good evening. Paul Demott, Wannage Township. I may be a little late with this question. This is my first commissioner meeting I've attended. On or about December 14th of last year, the county emails were hacked, both the election board and county employees' emails. What has the outcome of that investigation been, and what's going on with that? How's that gonna wrap in with the voting machines and your award of the contract that you did?
Good evening. My name is Susan Kelly, and I live at 225 Spring Street. Tonight, we brought a few people to discuss individual situations. But mine is, which I'm really dumbfounded to find out after all these investigations and involvement with other organizations, that there is no such legislation on the books for mold. Now, I find that really hard to believe with everything that they've got out there to cover everybody else. I, I cannot believe there's not a loophole in there for toxic chemicals or toxic threat. But I took it upon myself to send an email to the Senator of District 24, along with the Assemblymen, requesting some information, guide me. What does it take to get a law passed, and what do I have to do? Because right now, I'm losing. I'm losing, and the big company is smiling away. They're ignoring the mold issue. They're ignoring the whole test situation like it never happened. I'm gonna leave it up to the other ones to discuss the rest.
Good evening. Kieran McMaro, Freedon Township. Director, County Commissioners, Public, I'm sure you, most of you already know me. Relax, I'm not talking about the contract. I just wanted to thank you all for pulling the, the proposed change to retiree health benefits. It's very much appreciated.
Good evening. I'm here from Newton Town Center to report the garbage inside the building. I live on the first floor, and the garbage has not gotten to be put outside for over a week and a half. And I went to the office to tell the lady in the office, and she came down, took pictures of it with her phone, so that she could send it to the main office to tell them what's going on there. And I had a situation in my apartment two weeks ago, with 4:00 in the morning, there was water running in my bathroom, it was all over the place. So I called Newton Police Department, because we don't have a maintenance guy in our building, and the Newton Police Department came up. and the Newton Police Department came up and said that the people upstairs, the toilet was overflowing, and the water was coming down in my apartment, all over my bathroom, and into my kitchen area from the ceiling. So that's the situation. And I want to know what can be done about it, so this doesn't happen again, and that the garbage gets taken out every other day. It shouldn't be piling up for a week and a half.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I also want to take a moment to thank the Commissioner Board for removing the agenda item regarding the change in the health benefits. But I do want to circle back on what's not on the agenda and what can't be found in the minutes, which is a list of the bills. There is no information as to what exactly bills are being paid. It's just a list of how much is being paid out, and to see if that is something that is required to be made public and not have to be opened by the taxpayers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Rela, and I live at 225 Spring Street. I don't want to sound like we're beating a dead horse, but it's definitely a health issue. I have pictures here that were taken of the garbage, where the garbage is up to the second floor through the chute. Not only that, the whole first floor, it had to be at least 15 construction-sized bags. I would like to let you view this, if you'd like. I know there's not much you can do, but being that it is a health issue, you should, I feel you should be notified of it. I know your hands are tied, the residents' hands are tied, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Stewart, and I live at 225 Spring Street in the Newton Senior Building, or so it was supposedly named. I also want to talk about safety and health issues. Other members of the building have already witnessed some of the things, and we've gotten together, there's a lot of us that are having these problems over and over. Primarily, the seriousness of having no super in the building means there is nobody to get somebody into an apartment or get them out of the apartment if there's an emergency. You have seniors in there, many of us using strollers or are not able to walk well. The doors in the front of the building stay open sometimes, they don't always close, they don't always open with the fob. They've worked on it many times. This building is barely four years old. There's no excuse for repeat times and problems with this building. It comes down to somebody didn't do their job on inspections or whatever happened along the way when this was built. But that is serious. Another serious safety issue is the ductwork was never cleaned out after construction, which means that there's no, and there's no regular changing of filters in our apartments like there was supposed to. And there's also extensive mold throughout the apartments, dirt in the vents, bathroom vents that don't work, which just brings in more moisture, and it's already caused many broken tiles in the floors and in my floor and many floors, buckling of the wood floor so severely that they had to come in and redo parts of the floor. There's a broken door on the upstairs deck garden where we can go outside, and there's some beautiful gardens and some seats out there, but there's a broken window there, and the door never stays closed. It's some, and once we get any kind of snow, because it opens out, there's no protection or covering, it gets frozen up with snow. We can't even get in to the, onto the deck or use it for four months of the year. So it's basically shut. And a 75-year-old lady that lives near the end of that hallway, that is my floor also, the third floor, she's had times where water and wind is coming through that door and just rushing onto the floor, and she's had to go and mop it up. Many of us have pitched in and helped to try and clean on a regular basis, which is not done and hasn't been done for over two years. There is garbage that's not cleaned up. I also have pictures of that garbage chute that stopped up past the second floor. No floors are being cleaned. I asked for grab bars in my bathroom when I first moved in, three years and three months from now. It was on my original inspection thing, along with several other problems in the bathroom and the apartment that have never been repaired since I moved in. There's no clear walkways outside during a storm either. Ice either accumulates on some of the sidewalks, so there's no place for me to walk my dog or for us to walk. Either that, or lately, when it's only been raining, whoever's there and doing this is putting out excess salt, which is now all inside the garage where we don't need it, and that gets all over our dog's paws, and we constantly drag it into the building and the apartments. We need mats on each floor outside the elevator doors to help clean our feet and wipe off the excess salt. They put in all this expensive equipment and wooden floors, but they haven't made any arrangements to take care of it.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We do have a three-minute.
That's fine.
Time limit, and we do have to be fair to everybody else.
That's fine. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Director, can we ask again, some of these complaints, can you submit those in writing as well? Can you share those with us via email with the list? Because some of these things, and I'm taking notes as you're speaking, things like no grab bars in a facility that is considered to be a senior citizen facility, yet waiting three years and three months, or icy walkways. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to see the issue here, so I would like to, I just want to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No worries. Good evening. My name is Zoe Heath. I live in Hamburg. I haven't been able to come to a meeting because I started a new job, and we work late usually these nights. And I think my situation is something that many others in the county experience and is a wonderful argument for hybrid or live-streaming our meetings. I think older people who have issues with mobility, it's a great argument for having a hybrid option for these meetings. It is 2022. I just really would encourage the Board of Commissioners to consider letting people participate from home via Zoom. Other towns do it. I'm sure other counties do it. It would really just help everyone get involved in their local government, which I think is a great thing. And then, if possible, I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to the woman who spoke before me, so she can finish her statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
We do have one record to correct.
Yes, yes. Well, I want to close public comment first.
Hi. Beverly Stewart, again. This is on a different issue, but you talked about the lack of communication and transparency in the county. That's another big problem with this building.
That's okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But one of the issues that I'm very concerned about is that, does the county have any authority to help us get back open the unemployment office, the Social Security Office, the senior office, the social services? They are not available to help. I am still waiting on unemployment from July of 2020. I had a federal job with the Census, took three months to get my unemployment because it kept being delayed, finally got it, and then two months later, they stopped it. I appealed it. I have a registered appeal with the unemployment offices of August 7th, 2020. I've never received notification. There's no way for me to get into my account. There's no way for me to get information off the account, and I have called and called till I'm blue in the face.
Okay.
I'm totally disabled. I'm 71, but I usually have to, and I need to work part-time.
Totally understand, ma'am, and I really appreciate you bringing those concerns here. We have Carol in the back of the room here, who I know is taking notes, and she's the person to talk to about all this, and I'll make sure we have all that together, okay?
And for what it's worth, ma'am, the agencies you rattled off, unfortunately, they're all state agencies, except Social Security is a federal one, but, you know, the county's hands are somewhat tied. Fortunately, you've got some really great legislators here that have been extremely proactive in trying to do constituent services and reach out to those agencies to try to get things processed. But I know your frustration. We see it in our home county, too. It's just been terribly administered, and there are people, a lot of people like yourself that are still waiting. Unfortunately, there's very little that the county freestylers themselves or the commissioners are able to do on those couple of topics.
However, it is important that we're a partner with you in trying to get these issues resolved, and we are listening to you. We're putting our best team and our best people on it, because we want to see this issue resolved. And it's gotten worse, as what Dawn said. Remember when this was just about mold? We've come a long way over the last few months. So I really appreciate all the updates, and certainly from the Commissioner Board's standpoint, we've already directed our health staff not only to be here, to take these comments and to take your feedback and take your issues, but also to try to get something done out of it, like this call tomorrow with Newton, which I really expect something, hopefully, to come out of that. I do need to move, do you need to close our public comments? Do I have a motion to close our public comments? Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I was just getting to your question. I have to close public comments first before I address public comments, so I was just getting to you, sir. Your, on December 14th, the county email system was not hacked. Our accounts were spoofed, and the county worked with Microsoft to get that alleviated. But just for the record, our county email system was not hacked on December 14th.
So the text message I have from an elected official confirming the hacking is not accurate?
There's a difference, I'm sorry, there's a difference, there's a technical difference between hacking and spoofing. And hacking and suggesting that the county email system here was hacked was not the case, and that turned out not to be the case.
So, happy to discuss with you. I mean, public comment is exactly that, sir. It's a comment time, it's not like a Q&amp;A, so, you know, we're kind of going beyond the scope of what we normally do. Yeah. But the whole purpose of the response was literally to correct the record, because you made a comment that was just frankly, factually inaccurate. The system, the IT system here wasn't hacked, and we just wanted to make sure that the minutes reflected that that was not the case.
Item 22 on our agenda is our reminders portion of the agenda, and our reminder tonight is to please check the county's website at sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Item 23 on our agenda is executive session, and I'll ask Terry to please read the resolution into the record.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution, the Board of County Commissioners, as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. I'll begin with number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege. PBA 138 Prosecutor's Unit, PBA 138 Sheriff's Unit. Would we like to add anything under this?
Just other litigation matters. That's it.
Personnel policies.
Sorry. Personnel policies.
Personnel policies. Is there any other topic for any other exemption?
That's it.
All right. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business to which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall not reconvene and resume its meeting, open to the public, and therefore, the Board will adjourn its meeting from executive session.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion to accept, I'm sorry, is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session?
So move.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Get home safe, everybody. Thank you.